Township of Precipity, Troy Hills. Township Council Agenda Meeting, March 10th, 2015. Meeting called to order by myself at 7:31 PM. Please rise for the flag salute.
Glory, if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifey.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present: Mayor James R. Barberio; L&amp;M Sandman Business Administrator; Paula Cazarelli Assistant Business Administrator; John Inglesino Esquire Township Attorney; Yancy Rosermas Township Clerk; and Ann M. Cuji CFO. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council Meeting of March 17th, 2015. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance: Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board of the municipal building on January 8th, 2015, where it has remained to be posted since that date. A legal notice appeared on both the Daily Record on January 12th, 2015, and the Star Ledger on January 14th, 2015, and was forwarded by fax and other local newspapers and local radio stations on January 8th, 2015. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays and also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Okay, ordinances for second readings, public hearings, questions and concerns. Status of adopted ordinances: Ordinance Title and Number, Ordinance 2015:01. Adopted Date, February 24th, 2015. Mayoral Action, March 2nd, 2015. Effective Date, March 22nd, 2015. Discussion Reminders. Scheduled Meetings: March 17th, 2015 at 7:30 PM Regular Meeting; April 14th, 2015 at 7:30 PM Agenda Meeting. Minutes for Approval. Mayor?
Yes, before I read this statement into the record, I just gotta clarify, as the Township Attorney has opinion with regards to the last council meeting, when I spoke, I was basically told I would be removed from the council during discussion, which, you know, I don't want to see that happen ever again because as the mayor, I should have an opportunity to speak. So, I'm gonna be reading this statement into the record, and I wish not to be gobbled or cut off in any would manner. So, I don't know what the opinion is from the Township Attorney, but on the mayor being at meetings.
Mayor and I spoke after the last meeting, I think, that the portion of the meeting that the mayor was referring to took place when I wasn't here. I went back and reviewed the tape, and there was an instance in which the council president had indicated the words to the effect of this, the mayor didn't stop talking, that he would remove him from the dais, or have him removed from the dais. And so, the issue, you know, has come up in terms of what rights does the mayor have to be present and participate at council meetings? So, we went to the law. The powers of the council president are pretty clearly set forth in your town code, and they basically mimic the statute. And certainly, the council president has the power to make special committees, preside at the meetings, which is what the case law talks about, I use the word "preside," certainly has the power to state the questions, announce the results of votes, to rule on questions of order, subject to appeal to the council, and that's primarily in the realm of parliamentary procedure. Certainly has the power to sign resolutions that are adopted in his presence, and have other functions and powers and duties as the council may prescribe, but all of those, of course, are subject to state statute, which is really what is dispositive here. Under the Faulkner Act, the mayor may attend, has a right to attend, the council meetings, and the mayor has a statutory right to take part in discussions of the council. So, the mayor has an independent statutory right to be here and to participate in the discussion. His right to vote, of course, he has no right to vote except in the case of a tie and a questioning, filling a vacancy in the council, in which case he can make the deciding vote. So, I hope that that just clarifies matters in terms of what the mayor's rights are to be present and participate in the meetings, and hopefully that resolves that question.
Thank you.
Oh, and Mayor, just statutory site for your right to attend the meetings and take part in the discussions is at NJSA 40:69A-41B.
Okay, thank you, Councilor.
Mr. Inglesino, I have a question for you. I didn't say he didn't have a right to be at the meeting, but if he was disrupting the meeting, can he be, not part of the discussion, but disrupting the meeting, can he be removed from the dais?
Well, the mayor certainly has a right to participate in the discussions, and so, if your view of him being disruptive is the fact that he is participating in a discussion concerning the council, then I would answer the question in the negative, that you do not have the right to remove him. If he was being disruptive in a manner that, you know, prevented, and I'm at a loss at the moment to think of an example of how he would be disruptive in the sense that the council was precluded from conducting its business, I guess, you know, in the most egregious circumstance, you know, perhaps, but to participate in the discussion on town business, no. In that instance, there's no right to remove the mayor. He has the right to be here under statute than to participate.
Okay, quick question, and it's unfortunately, we have to discuss this now. I thought this was gonna be a nice, quiet meeting, and we're gonna go on like adults here. However, there's been behavior in the past, and I'm not trying to obviously pick on the mayor here, I'm not in the mood to debate him, is that when you have the mayor who's getting up and down, sitting back into the audience, coming here, that's been a distraction to the council. That has happened in the past, where he gets very upset, he walks by us, says words. As a matter of fact, John, if you wanna pull the tape from the very beginning meetings back in January 2004, me, I am obviously pointing at him for a remark that he made towards me. So, again, everything on, you know, the behavior, if behavior is at a point where it's not being controlled, then yeah, I would say the council has a right, just like your behavior. If you don't obviously behave, you could be removed. And I don't wanna go this way, Mayor, in regards to it, but I think that we should all try to get along as best as possible and be adults up here, and move on with the town's business, because we have a budget that we have to deal with, and I don't wanna deal with more drama, because this is getting silly. So, let's kinda like look back internally at all of us here and say that maybe behavior on both parts can be taken care of, okay? So, I'm not saying you're wrong, or we're right, vice versa, but it's nonsense, we just move on with the council meetings. That's all I'm asking. And I think the audience would agree with that. Let's just move on.
If the question is whether or not the mayor getting up out of his seat is disruptive behavior that could have him banned from the council meeting, I would opine that that is not disruptive behavior. He's allowed to get up out of his seat.
No, John, hold on, now tell me. See, the only thing is, I would have to say that where you're being a little bit biased, which doesn't surprise me whatsoever, where you get paid a million dollars a year to be biased, but the reality is this.
So much for the adult meeting.
I could pull the tape of when I am pointing at the mayor in regards to keeping his comments to himself, where he walked by here parading, making comments towards the council members, and then sitting there with bad behavior, where he slammed the, obviously, the little door there. So, don't tell me that's not disruptive behavior.
Look, the mayor's not in school, he's not gonna get into tension for getting out of his seat. He's allowed to do.
Okay, so, John, see, that's how you're perceiving it. That's how you're perceiving it.
I'm the town attorney, I'm giving you my opinion.
I'll make sure I won't get out of my seat.
That's your opinion.
No, Mr. Inglesino, I'm not talking about, I know he's entitled to being part of the discussion, but I'm talking about when I'm trying to get the meeting to move on, and it's been enough on the discussion, and I'm banging the gavel, and the mayor just won't stop.
If the discussion is because of content, Mr. Council President, of the type that you just don't wanna hear, then that is not a reason, and I don't wanna go into the specific comments that the mayor made that prompted you to gavel him, because I don't think that would be productive at this particular time. But you can't just say, "I don't like what the mayor is saying, therefore I'm gonna gavel him out of order." What I'm saying is, is that the mayor has a statutory right, indisputable statutory right, to be here and to participate in the discussion. That's what I'm saying.
Are we moving like adults here?
Okay, I'm gonna read my statement into the record. As the public is aware, at the February 10th, 2015 council meeting, Councilman Michael DePiero requested that the township expert in the James Carrifey case, Aurora Information Security Risk, to appear before the council to discuss the amount of time they were forced to spend uncovering James Carrifey's download and destruction of an enormous amount of sensitive police department data. Just as importantly, Aurora was to inform the council and the public of the need to make significant security enhancements to our police department's computer system. The council was in unanimous agreement that Aurora should appear. Members of the public also expressed support of Aurora's appearance. Incredibly, by an email dated March 5th, 2015, from Councilman Rob Peluso through Township Clerk Yancy Rosermas, Councilman Peluso wants Aurora removed from the council agenda. I will now read Mr. Peluso's email into the public record. "Hi, Yancy and Ellen, thanks for the presentation information. Your email reminded me that the presentation from Aurora Information Security Risk was not done. Respectfully, as Council VP, I want them removed from future agendas and the council meetings considering the entire council does not have background information on their company, related documents, and that matter at hand. When the entire council is provided with all the background information, we would invite them back to present, which will afford the entire council the opportunity to ask more appropriate detailed questions. Please feel free to call me if you have any further questions. Mr. Peluso wants background information on Aurora. I want on the record to reflect that members of my administration attempted to set up a meeting with Aurora and Mr. Peluso, but Mr. Peluso declined to meet with Aurora. Perhaps, Mr. Peluso, if you want information about Aurora, and you don't wanna meet with them privately, which we can still set that up, then I suggest you go to Aurora's website. Matt Ferrante, who was a person working on the Carrifey case, is the founder of Aurora. Prior to Aurora's security, Mr. Ferrante was with the Barclays Bank in London, where he founded Barclays CFI eDiscovery, and was his first director. Before Barclays, Mr. Ferrante was Special Agent with the United States Secret Service. He has served on President Clinton's Special Agent with the United States Secret Service, excuse me. He has served on President Clinton's Protection Detail, U.S. Critical Infrastructure, and several successful High Pro for High Tech Investigation Operations. Mr. Ferrante has an extensive background in physical and network infrastructure protection with specialties in global enterprise intelligence, threat assessments, international organized crime, e-crime forensics, breach investigations, incident response, extreme hacking, data loss prevention detection, fraud, employee misconduct remediation, and asset identification. He has successfully testified in U.S. federal courts and is considered by federal districts as an expert in this field. Mr. Ferrante was educated at the United States Secret Service Academy, Federal Law Enforcement Training Center, Electronics Crime Special Agent Program, and Mercy College for Criminal Justice. Some of Aurora's clients include Barclays Bank, IBM, the United States Secret Service, United States Presidential Detail, the United Kingdom Ministry of Defense, and the Royal Canadian Mounted Police, and all the information is at your fingertips. Just as a casual review of Aurora's website, will quickly demonstrate that Aurora is a global leader in information security and data recovery. I would also remind the council that Aurora previously provided valuable service to Precipity by uncovering an international hacking scheme into our phone system at our sewer treatment facility. Aurora's good work saved our taxpayers $300,000 in phone charges. So, Mr. Peluso, your claim that you don't know enough about Aurora is lame, and as a document, Aurora has submitted four reports in the Carrifey case. Two of those reports were submitted to law enforcement agency in connection with criminal investigations. On advice of the council, we will not make those reports public. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Peluso, do not ban us Aurora from this and future agendas of council, because he needs more information. As I've demonstrated, Mr. Peluso is not being straight. So, Mr. Peluso, my question to you, have you spoken to Council President Carrifey to remove this from the agenda?
I copied him on that email, yes.
That's it? I need to know, Mr. Ferrante.
Well, Council President, if I may speak.
Go ahead.
My motion at the last meeting to have Aurora here was not to mention James Carrifey at all. My request was to have Aurora give us their credentials, who they are, what their qualifications are, and justify the thousands of hours that they would have had to spend to bill us what they did, and to justify their billing. As I recall, Councilman Valori welcomed them coming here, because he had lots of questions for them. Now, neither, inviting Aurora here was a council vote. Five-member council vote. Either you, Council President, or you, Council Vice President, have the authority to revoke a council vote. Neither one of you can do that. We voted to have them here. You don't have the authority to cancel them, neither one of you. You understand that? Now, if Aurora doesn't come here, per the council request, okay, then I don't wanna hear anymore about $700,000 bill, because we had our chance to ask them all the questions and justify their work and their hours right here. The public has a right to know that. Jonathan Nelson had questions about the hours that they billed, okay? The public had a right to know it. All they heard was $700,000, but we haven't had a chance to find out what they're doing, how long it's taking, and when they're gonna be done. At no time was the intent of that motion to talk about a particular case that they were investigating, or mention any names.
Mr. DePiero, if you wanna talk about a five-nothing vote, we also had a five-nothing vote to do an audit on bills which you voted yes to, and then all of a sudden you had a meeting at Mr. Inglesino's office, and you flip-flopped and went against the audit, so...
Well, that was a letter sent from me, Council President Carrifey, so, I mean...
I'm just saying, if we're talking about voting five-nothings.
So, it's...
I didn't change the agenda.
All right.
Robert, Robert Supers.
I'll let the agenda, Rob Peluso answers. Well, just for the record, I asked for them to come back at a later time, when I have background information, so I can ask intelligent questions. I do not know about the company, I don't have copies of their bills that are unredacted, I don't have any documents, I don't have any contracts, I know nothing about this company. So, what intelligent questions can I possibly ask?
You had the opportunity to meet them.
So, out of respect, I asked if I can gather more information and have them come back at a later time. I'm not adverse to them coming to the council meeting. I say I want more background information. Your interpretation is to see what the name of the company is and how they were formed. That's not the question. The question is to have more information about Aurora and its processes, and what they did in the town, in order for me to ask intelligent questions.
Well, you could have had...
And I'm not gonna stoop to your level of argumenting, as we do at these council meetings.
This isn't an argument.
This was supposed to be a smooth council meeting, and there is no reason to bring up these particular items.
Well, I haven't seen many smooth ones. No, there is, because you removed it.
There was, because you canceled the agenda.
Right, first and foremost, this is, well, I'm not arguing with you, yelling at you, I'm just telling you, you've had opportunities to meet with Aurora, and I can set up another meeting for you to meet with Aurora.
I did not have an opportunity, I was never asked to meet with them.
Yes, you were.
But why was I asked to meet with them?
I have an email, Rob.
You had to babysit. You sent back an email that said, "You have to babysit send Lou."
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the hour before that you emailed, where I had a baby that had a fever, and I was at home.
And nobody's...
Very nice, that's appropriate, a business sense.
Listen, Robert, nobody's questioning that.
That's what I found out about it.
The fact is this.
Okay, so, you're trying to utilize that against me.
Fact is this, I will say, no, no one's utilizing that against you.
You know what, you have a gripe to bear, gripe somewhere else.
I don't have no gripe to bear. I have no gripe whatsoever to bear.
You know, don't start with me. You started with two other councilmen, don't start with me.
No, Rob, you're the one that made the motion to remove them from the agenda, and you're the one that spoke to the council president to remove who has a...
Listen, I understand everybody's desire to meet with Aurora, and hopefully, one day we all will. However, what I'm just a little concerned about, and I brought this up in the chat today to get the details out, we all had a unanimous vote in regards to, in their audit on, obviously, Aurora billing the town, $700,000 about, but you're right, if it wasn't for Ellen, we wind up paying $267,000 in those area.
Good job, Ellen.
Okay? So, Ellen, thank you, and I still need to see that agreement with Aurora, that they're still not gonna bill the town for the rest of that $400,000 and change.
Absolutely.
However, Mike, when you had, again, I'm not here to argue with you, but in regards to the audit, you know, a lot of maybe desires and animos, not, I don't wanna say animosities, maybe doubts on what's going on here with the administration would have been taken care of if an independent order, like Mr. Serenelli, that's his expertise, would have conducted the audit, because, Mike, I have an email here based on January 22nd, where he basically states that, "I spoke to Ellen and Lou, I have made some fairly minor revisions to the engagement letter, I have spoken with Lou, and he has agreed to approve the engagement letter and have you sign it, so that the process can move forward. Ellen has agreed that she and her office are in agreement with the procedure, that's the BA, and will cooperate with us to obtain the information that we need to complete the report." And just for the public's information, so, because this was never read out there, the agreement for this audit was the following: There's nothing confidential in this audit that was taking place, that anybody was looking for. We wanted to make sure that we were justifying $700,000, which was $200 an hour, do the math yourself, that's 3,500 hours. So, Schedule A here, which I will turn over to the clerk here, list of agreed-upon procedures that myself and Mr. DePiero agreed upon, which was never followed up through to be signed, but unanimously voted on by the council. Number one: Obtain copies of all Inglesino's law firm vouchers from October 11th through January 2015. Compare vouchers provided to a vendor's history report to ensure we have received copies of all vouchers. Read and extract a listing of time spent on James Carrifey matters for that time period. If possible, separate the civil case charges from the criminal case charges. Two: Obtain copies from Aurora information risk invoices from inception to January 15th, 2015. Create a listing of all invoices by date of service, hours, billing rate, supply expense, state, tax, total. Obtain a copy of the contractual agreement with Aurora, if available. Determine that Aurora billing rates and expenses were within the contract agreement. The contract, we never saw. Obtain a listing report and any voucher invoice checks paid to Aurora. Obtain a written confirmation from Inglesino Law, of all payments made by that firm to Aurora. Obtain written confirmation from Aurora, all invoices relative to James Carrifey matter. Obtain written confirmation from Aurora of payments received from the Inglesino Law Firm and the Township Precipity Troy Hills. Obtain a written statement of any settlement agreement from the Township Administrator, which we just talked about, for the actual amount to be paid to Aurora for this contract. Obtain written confirmation from Aurora on acceptance of the agreement. Request that Administrator may provide legal bills from the attorney who had provided service to the township relative to James Carrifey matter. We would specifically request the related invoices from Mr. Levy and Mr. Trimbley." It goes on further in the emails, that if there's anything that's confidential dealing with the James Carrifey matter, we would not be entitled to, be redacted. So, we're talking about being transparent. We're talking about $700,000 that we were billed for, and thank God, we didn't have to pay that total amount. But there's gotta be accountability here. So, no one's picking on anybody here in regards to accountability, and Mr. DePiero, we had a unanimous vote on that, and we met, we sat there for a few hours with Mr. Ray Serenelli, the auditor. Mayor Barberio, you walked in, you saw the audit procedures taking place, a week went by, this is what came up, and obviously, we decided not to go through it. Not saying that you, Mr. DePiero, are gonna go through with it, the mayor, so...
And I'm gonna respond, because I have to respond.
You can respond.
First of all, I came in and shook hands and left. That wasn't like I saw what you guys were doing. How you doing? Have a good Friday, have a good weekend, that's what I did. Wasn't sitting there through the process of the audit. Actually, this audit is not becoming an audit, it was becoming an investigation, and the fact is that you were sent a letter of conflict as well, you know, and Council President Carrifey had a conflict, so why can you even vote on doing this audit when it pertains to Aurora, when it pertains to John Inglesino? So, that's where we're left at. It's an investigation, it's not an audit. So, like Council President Carrifey said, they're doing the annual audit, and when that annual audit's done, you get to see everything that's taking place.
That's not a forensic audit. The thing I wanted to bring out, this is not an investigation, this is an audit procedure, this is very broad in general. This is not even a forensic audit here.
Have you ever done audits before?
This is not a forensic audit here. And number two, you didn't state anything to the other board members that voted on it, that you claim that are not in conflict, which would be Mr. Stanton, Mr. Peluso, and Mr. DePiero. So, I guess their vote or their opinion doesn't matter, and remember, it's your opinion...
No, it's not, it's not.
It's your opinion and Mr. Inglesino's that I'm in conflict.
Okay.
And I can reassure you that I'm not in conflict.
All right, that's fine.
The bottom line is, okay, they could have been here tonight to answer all the questions you wanted, but it's been blocked now, and you can't get those answers.
Well, it would have been nice to have them here after the audit's done, and then we could ask specifics in regards to it. And nobody was accusing Aurora for doing anything that was illegal. I'm hoping they didn't do anything illegal.
Absolutely.
But the reality is, if the numbers came back on the audit, we could suggest and say, "How did you, in God's name, come up with 3,500 hours to bill the town?"
That's one of the questions you could have asked them. Let them justify hours.
Can we move, can we move on? If you met with them, you should have asked them that.
Wait, wait, let me just make one more point, okay? The other concern I had was, okay, what Aurora is capable of doing is telling us how we need to beef up that police computer, so this can never happen again. What do we need in that police computer to protect it in the future? Both long-term, so that information that's stored in there can only be retrieved by certain people, it should be an archive that goes on forever. There should be, after five years, you still don't wanna erase it, you block it and have a password to get into those previous years prior to five years, and all of that, they could recommend to upgrade and improve the police computer.
Shouldn't that be a presentation to the police department?
Hold on for one second. Here's what I just want to say, Mr. DePiero, and you're right, and I agree with it. However, I guess it sat on deaf ears on January 7th, 2014, when I suggested that. What safeguards are in place? What policies are in place? Are we gonna improve the system that was in place? We were told the server got access, which now we find out the server didn't get access? We find out after the fact that it overrides itself every three days, so, when we discussed that a year ago, months went by when we had our budget. So, why didn't Chief Phillips even bring up the fact that we should have improved that system a year ago? And why is it only now, policies and procedures are getting placed on how to handle data that is given out at the police department? So, two years gone by, and the problem is, it's reactive, not proactive. And one thing I will say for the record, if this town has any other alleged breaches of information, whatever, I stressed it in closed session, what do we do with the folks that work in the finance with us?
Councilman, don't talk about closed session.
What do we do with the information that we have that has all our identifiers on it, okay? What other safeguards do we have in all the other utilities, which obviously have done nothing to protect that system?
These are all questions we could have asked Aurora.
Well, you know, the thing matters...
I know proactive, I agree proactive is better, but we weren't. We're here now, we're at this point in time, okay? So, we can't be proactive, it's done. But we can be reactive and take up safeguards, we're starting the budget process. What do we need to spend in that police computer to make it safe and secure, you know, into the future? We need to know that before we vote on the budget.
And I agree with you. There needs to be much more significant things done on the police department in regards to folks bringing their laptops home, bringing their CD home, their thumb drive home, their hard drive home.
I'll respond to that, I'll respond to that, because, no, no, I have to, because it really sucks. We're gonna talk about that in the...
Yeah, because we talked about those policies.
But we're gonna talk about it in our meetings between the finance committee.
Okay, but those are all my concerns.
Yeah, and those are being addressed, and we'll talk, in fact, since I'm on it now, you're gonna be getting, you know, dates, because now that we're getting near the end to prep for the budget, where the finance committee can meet on a regular basis on all the departments that we basically can.
Okay, and they're not taking a shot at you.
And that'll be one of the discussions.
And this is not taking a shot at you, and this is a perfect example.
I'm thick-skinned.
No, no, this is not. I mean, the military has these breakdowns all the time, where they're leaving the Pentagon or whatever, and they have their laptop, and they leave it on the subway, they lose the thumb drive or whatever. I just wanna know what other safeguards that we have in place. So, nothing is lost at the police department, or here at Town Hall. I think that's a fair question.
All right. Real quick, I'm gonna make a motion. My motion is that during this week, the mayor, you set up a meeting with Mr. DePiero, Mr. Peluso, and Aurora, and we put them back on the schedule for next week and get this over with, because otherwise, we're gonna do this every meeting. So, that's my motion.
The question I have here for...
I second the motion.
Okay. Roll call.
No, let me finish my point, I was gonna say, since Mr. Inglesino's here, let me ask you a question. If Aurora's here, are we able to discuss civil litigation and possibly issues that could be possibly even criminal?
No, that was not my intent. My intent when I made the motion last week...
So I just wanna make sure this isn't out of control.
...was strictly limited, James Creefy would not be mentioned. It was strictly, what are their qualifications? What are they looking at? What's taking so long? How many hours have they really spent on it? And when is it gonna end? And then security for the police department? Those are the questions I wanted to hear.
And we discussed that, just to answer Mr. Valori's question.
Who discussed this?
I don't, my office with Aurora, because...
To discuss with the council?
No, what I'm saying is, the question, your question, had to be discussed, because there is, obviously, if you're going to be discussing the number of hours that they put on the case, and if you want to know what work was done on the case, it seems to me impossible to then say, you're not gonna discuss the case.
They're looking for missing data in the police computer, they don't have to mention...
But to, if you wanna drill in...
I mean, that's a huge server, that server is over a terabyte of information.
Hold on, just let Mr. Inglesino finish.
Let him finish. Let me just finish the point. It's really difficult, I think, for the council to get a good understanding of how the time was spent, and not discuss the case, because that's where they spent the time. So if you really wanna drill into, you know, what's this charge, then you can't do that without discussing the case. From Aurora's perspective, their view is, our report's our report, we're prepared to discuss it. I don't, you know, from what they had relayed to us, they're not at all shy about discussing what's in their report, which means that I don't think they're going to object to discussing the case. And it seems to me that in order, again, to really account for their time, it's impossible to do that without discussing the case. Now, if the council says, we don't wanna have that discussion in open session, that's fine, then you can say, you don't wanna have that discussion in open session. But then don't sit here and say, I don't understand how you could spend so much time, and then say, we don't wanna hear from you, because it would require you to discuss the case, because that's exactly what they would have to do. If what you wanted to do was to discuss with them, you know, the going-forward issue in terms of enhancements and improvements that would have to be made in the system, then fine, that would be the ground rule, and perhaps that's appropriate, because you're entering into the budget cycle, and you may want to appropriate money, whether it be in operating or capital, for a security enhancement upgrade.
Which I suggested a year ago.
You could have them in for that purpose, if you wanted to. But, you know, I think you have to sort of decide, and maybe offline, as to not belabor the point, take up any more time. Tonight, we can discuss that.
Wouldn't that be a presentation to, like, the IT people in the police department?
No, I think, well, because it's a money issue, it's a freedom, but it's up to you.
Listen, I'm gonna make an arbitrary here, Council President, let's just, I'll discuss it the rest of the night here, and I'll, we'll talk and how we wanna move forward with it at the next meeting, if possible, because we'll be here all night.
Sure, I agree. Let's move on. Are you sure? I have four good questions. Ah, we'll move on. Okay, administration? He pulled it back. Administration?
I'm right here. She popped out of nowhere.
What I'm looking for is...
Because that was such a sacred trust, I'll make sure I get a copy of that.
You have copies for everybody, or you need it to go? Or you won't? Okay.
But anyway, I'm gonna make that part of my report, and then make sure...
Oh, okay, thank you.
I have to go to the bathroom, I'm about to get out. No, raise your hand.
That was just...
What I just handed the Council President was, one of the things that was raised at the meeting a while ago was what security had been done, and what I do in the process is you always utilize that time, and we met back, and I don't know what the date on that is, but I think on March 3rd, I got the update, because I had asked them what they had done during the course of 2014 to correct some of the security matters. I'll make sure that the council and clerk get a copy of that, in addition to my short report here, with regard to what's been taking place and some of the things, the highlights. I just would like to say that we are awaiting the $2.5 million, we're close to getting that from the FEMA folks. We did receive of some additional funding from FEMA, $184,730, so we keep vigilant on that. I don't think it's necessary for this meeting, but I think put into, you know, into discussion with regard to a particular case as it relates to the individual known as Ms. Patel. And I think, for the record, we're moving forward on working on the new folks that are fixing the home, and I have disseminated information to Ms. Patel. Cablevision, as I mentioned at last meeting, we're very pleased to say at this juncture that they are completely completing the installation, and they have changed over to Channel 21, which will be Parsippany's own channel, which is of great, I think of great enthusiasm. We will be happy for that, from the county feed to our feed. It's not a process that will happen overnight, but they're close to putting that to go out throughout the whole entire community. We switch over to our feed by the end of next week, and this was, I had gotten this information at the latter part of last week. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March 11th, at 3:00 PM, 3:30 PM, we're gonna have a, discussing the guidelines as to how best to utilize this very informative document. One of the things that is really important to utilize your own channel is to have the bulletin board on, so that we can put out over the airwaves information as to events that are occurring, meeting certain bits of information that would be certainly very interested, you know, by interested parties in the public. So, we'll be meeting on making sure that what goes into that is acceptable, you know, over the airwaves. So that I wanted to just let you know, and I thank Jeff Caviello for keeping up due diligence. It was a long, hard journey for just getting the lines to be hooked up by Cablevision, but the end is very near, so we're happy with that. One of the things that I'm asked in regard to 42 North Beavwick Road, there's a good start of mine in addition with others in the public with regard to the tarp. If the tarp was of any value or use, it would be covering the roof that apparently has a leak or supposedly has a leak. I asked today, or last week sometime, for that to be removed if it's not doing any good and is unsightly. I will say that, of course, nothing is easy, of course, the thing is near an electrical wire, so it's a work in progress, it always has been a work in progress. But I did check on the amount of times the police have been there. According to the records that I have, as you know, the home is in foreclosure. We're still trying to track down the next bank that took it over, and these are not, a lot of times the banks that do take it over are not the kind of banks you expect, you know, they're not banks that are very easily accessible or financial institutions, it's very difficult you get in connection with them. We checked with the police department and learned that there were, according to this, two full responses in 2013, and according to this record, only one. That might be disputed by others, but, you know, I'm doing, I'm following up with it, because I think very shortly, we have to find another way. One of the things we did do, which was we had to hire and put a lien on the property for it to be cleaned up. I have photographs of it, at least it looks a little bit decent, but it's unacceptable for Parsippany to have that such a long time in that state. I think, you know, just on a happy note, a happy note for me, it's always nice to do things in your community, and for veterans, myself and Ann Kucci and her daughter sang two songs, or lip-sung two songs, God forbid I sing it, it wouldn't have got the results it got, which was some people clapping. But what it turned into is something nice, as we did the Andrews Sisters, and hopefully did them justice, we must've at least piqued the interest of kids. Intervale, the third graders attended the November 11th ceremony and liked the Andrews Sisters. They used it as a teachable moment, and they watched the Andrews Sisters and the Harry James Orchestra video on YouTube. They loved it so much, they're now singing "Don't Sit Under the Apple Tree" at their flutophone concert on June 10th, at 1:30 PM in the gym in Intervale, inviting the veterans. So I say this in the spirit of, there is a lot of very good things happening in Denville, and if you can be, Denville, oh, I'm sorry. Oh! However, it is a... No, I will say this, it is a Freudian slip, but it's the best Freudian slip you can ever have, because if I'm saying that from the Denville that I love, it's saying such a much about my new home that I love.
You love Parsippany more.
Absolutely, but that's true.
Ellen, I wanna know one thing, I'm devastated here.
Oh, you're sure?
You were lip-singing that song?
You thought it was for real, right? You know, I have to be honest with you, I thought this younger officer, police officer was kidding when he said, wow, you really sound like the Andrews Sisters. He thought we were really singing, but we take it wherever we can get it. So anyway...
I ate the apples from the apple tree, too.
On that note, you know, I just wanted to share that, I mean, we're all so hard, there's so many different moving parts. I had this discussion with Councilman Paluso on a myriad of things, we send back and forth on things we're working on, so I just thought that was a cute thing to report, and, okay, I know it was about me, but it was fun, it was fun, to be a teachable moment, it only happens probably once or twice in your life, so, thank you, thank you, Council President. And I'll make sure that that document gets out to the council, so that they know that there is security there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bids taken, none to be taken, March 12th, 2015, 11:00 AM. Seal proposals, supplying various materials for the municipal utilities and public works. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, received none, requested none. Ordinances, we have an additional ordinance to add to the list for the agenda for next week's meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Council President. There'll be an ordinance concerning redevelopment plan on property, with respect to property of Cherry Hill Road, which the council had previously declared in need of redevelopment. There's some timing issues there, so we will, Ed Snikus is working on the redevelopment plan, I met with him extensively this week, and it will be ready, otherwise Ed and I will have words. It'll be ready for introduction at the next meeting, so I'm gonna add that to the agenda.
Is that the old PAs of property?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Discussions, resolutions, any questions or concerns? Okay, engineering report, Mr. Stanton.
Okay, Toyota Motor Sales, USA Inc., performance guarantee release block 737, lot 4. Developers completed all required site construction activity to performance guarantee. Inspections have been made during the course of the construction, this office has no objection to the release of the performance bond. Resolution will be need to be adopted by the township council. We need to do anything, or just put it on?
Next week.
Okay. Major soil movement permit, 299 Park Road, block 166, lot 111.1. Board of Adjustment has approved a major soil movement permit in conjunction with the construction of a new single-family dwelling at the referred property. Board of Adjustment and the office recommend the township council approve the permit by resolution.
Next week, I'll see you.
Okay, thank you. All right, chief financial officer?
Ann went home ill, she was sick yesterday, and...
It's not?
Nothing to do with this group, no.
To the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was meant affectionately. Thank you.
Mr. Inglesino?
Yes, two items, Mr. Council President. First, you may have heard that today the Supreme Court came out with an anticipated decision regarding COA, Council on Affordable Housing. Just came out this morning, I've not had an opportunity to review the case in any detail, but based upon the summary excerpts that the court also sent out, it appears to be a decision that is going to be very perceived as very pro-developer and pro-affordable housing advocates. I had indicated to the council on several occasions publicly that my concern with respect to the Waterview property was that the court may reinstitute builder's remedy as an avenue for developers to pursue, and that is exactly what the court did today. It's not as straightforward as that, and I will be reviewing the case, I was in consultation with the mayor today. The court has provided a brief period of time, I think, for everyone to sort of digest the ramifications of the decision, but it appears as though that there's going to be a lot of work that we are going to have to do to, you know, best prepare Parsippany for the future as it relates to affordable housing. And there are a lot of properties in town that are now going to be at risk for development that may come over your objection, and so we're gonna have to be able to digest this case and prepare for that world. So if you hear about the case in the news or whatever, I wanted to at least give you sort of that flavor and let you know that I'll be reporting back to you on it. Secondly, I have a statement to prepare and that I'd like to read into the record, it's a personal statement, and it's not one that I relish reading, but I can tell you that, you know, as a lawyer and as a professional, for the last 25 years or so, and as a former elected official, serving as a councilman, mayor, and as a freeholder, you know, my integrity is of the utmost importance to me. I have my experience, I have my word, I have my integrity. And when people attack my credibility, you know, if you take pride in your credibility and your integrity, then you're not being honest if you say that it doesn't affect you when people attack your credibility, because it does. And you're not a human being if it doesn't. Those attacks on my credibility came shortly after we instituted suit in October of 2013. Prior to that, I wasn't taking those kinds of attacks, and so I have a statement to read relative to the ethics charges that three members of the council brought against me, ethics charges that were very highly publicized in the newspapers, and I wanna read a statement in regards to, the ones that you passed, and I'm gonna read about it. On March 11th, 2014, almost one year ago to this very day, Councilman Paul Creefy, Lou Valori, and Rob Paluso passed Resolution 2014-35. The resolution alleged that in 2013, I and my law partners violated the township's pay-to-play ordinance by making and soliciting contributions from members of my law firm to the campaign account of Senator Kevin O'Toole, with Mr. O'Toole then making a contribution to the campaign fund of Mayor Barbario. It is my understanding that the clerk sent the resolution to the Office of Attorney Ethics of the Supreme Court of the State of New Jersey, at the direction of Council President Paul Creefy. The resolution states in the third whereas clause, that the information, quote, and I quote from the resolution, demonstrates that I acted in violation of Parsippany's pay-to-play law. The resolution also indicates in the second to last whereas clause, that contributions, and by contributions, I mean contributions from me, to O'Toole, to Barbario, quote, create an irrefutable presumption that the contributions were in exchange for one another. As I said, this resolution was sent down to the state, and the charges were very highly publicized. The Office of Attorney Ethics conducted a thorough investigation into the conclusion reached by Councilman Creefy, Valori, and Paluso. I want everybody to know that I and my law partners, and one of my law partners has sat on numerous ethics committees herself, we fully cooperated with the investigation, we made ourselves available for interviews, we answered all questions, completely and honestly. And by letter dated February 12 of 2015, Charles Santinero, who is the director of the Office of Attorney Ethics, stated that, quote, "I have dismissed the above and closed the file." The report, which I have copies of and will make part of the record, concludes, and I wanna quote the language from the report, that our investigation uncovered no evidence, no evidence, let alone clear and convincing evidence required in ethics matters, that the resolution was correct in its conclusory... the resolution was correct in its conclusory language. Needless to say, I never doubted the outcome of this matter, and I am delighted that it has been officially concluded. The resolution passed by the council convicting me of wrongdoing was without any basis whatsoever, and the formation of this committee of a whole is pure retaliation, in my opinion, against me for instituting suit on behalf of the township against Mr. Karifi's brother. I want everybody to know that as a township attorney, I'm just going to do my job. It did bother me that people would attack my credibility without due process, without a hearing, without any fact-finding whatsoever, and then seek to conduct the trial after the conviction of the crime. But I also felt it important to share with the public and to the council the finding of this esteemed Office of Attorney Ethics, which I can assure the public did conduct a thorough investigation and to relay them their conclusions. Again, it is not my desire to sit here and make this kind of public statement, and if it weren't for the resolution that was passed, the way it was done, and the way it was publicized, then I would have chosen to just quietly put the letter in the file. But I've been put in a position of having to vindicate my good name that I have worked a lifetime to establish, and I will defend my name, and I will defend my reputation, and nobody's going to take that away from me. So I thank you, Mr. Council President, for the opportunity to make the statement, and again, I will put Mr. Sentinero's letter and a copy of the report in the record with the clerk.
I appreciate you spending your time and effort there, and what's interesting was our complaint that we made... Council President, were you ever notified from the...
No.
Election law?
Okay.
There seems to be a pattern with that. What's interesting here, I want to read on the record something that the mayor, along with the...
Sir.
Our township attorney failed to provide to the council members that they falsely accuse for violating the sunshine law. There's a memo here from the Morris County Prosecutor's Office dated November 13, 2014, and I would just put specifically the case number, MCPO, Morris County Prosecutor's Office, their case number 14-0079, so that's the complaint, regards to Councilman Karifi, Valori, and Peluso. It goes, gentlemen, on July 2, 2014, the Office of the Attorney General, Division of Criminal Justice superseded this office's investigation of claims relating to the above captured matter. There's other matters that were involved here, but I'm relating it specifically to, obviously, the sunshine law alleged violation, which we spent money on with the township attorney and Mr. Lavery of allegations. Following the thorough investigation, the Division of Criminal Justice has notified this office that criminal charges will not be pursued at this time. The Division has recommended that these matters be referred back to rescivity and any further administrative action deemed appropriate, which we were still never even notified about it. So the allegations that we violated the sunshine law is appalling. And John, you know, I love the fact that you say integrity and experience, because if there was integrity and experience involved here, you would have realized that you had five councilmen that were concerned of the billing that you started with this particular company, Aurora, that cost us $700,000 without the council's approval. Okay? We went from an $80,000 bill to a $700,000 bill. So I'm not done with this.
And this is what we just said we weren't going to do, what we're doing now.
They're going off.
We said we weren't bringing up Aurora, that's ending.
So we're talking about integrity.
Did you really think this would go smooth tonight?
$700,000. In regards to the payments on this pay-to-play violation, this just was brought out out of thin air. There was an increment of money that I would say the law of averages, you can never say that the return of $5,000 to the gentleman that donated $5,000 to the mayor's campaign would in any way, shape, or form, it's mind-boggling that those precise increments went back broken down. And then we're going to talk about integrity here.
Well, they didn't, Mr. Valori, and I'm...
Listen, I'm not done talking.
Well, I'm not going to have my integrity maligned after the Office of Attorney Ethics has investigated this matter and concluded.
I sat in this building on a Sunday night where I was offered a $50,000 job as a township attorney.
Oh, God.
Okay? But remember, out to the public, I was demonized that this meeting never occurred, it was never authorized, I was never authorized...
Mr. Valori, nobody said a meeting didn't...
So when it comes to integrity, don't even go there with integrity.
You are lying.
You're the million-dollar attorney, that's all I call you. That's all you ask.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, let's move on.
So you know, Mr. Valori.
Okay, now we have a Township Officers' Committees, we have a presentation by the Environmental Committee.
We're dealing with you, I have to.
Can I turn the mic on?
Welcome, ladies.
Okay.
Hello.
Thank you. If you turn it, it takes a second, there you go.
How's that?
Yes.
Talking? You just have to speak right into it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Thanks for having us tonight. My name is Laura McCloskey, and I'm representing the Environmental Advisory Committee. We've lost a couple members throughout the evening, but we have Lynn Pearson here, who's handing out a flyer with an idea of something that we want to do for the township, and we have Mohammed Ansari here with us, one of our committee members. And we're sort of going to tie on to Ellen's statement of doing good things for the township, and we have some good ideas, and we're actually going to present to you tonight a township contest that we'd like to begin as part of the Environmental Advisory Committee with the Town Council and the mayor, and do something that's like a Parsippany-centered event that will culminate at the Fall Festival. So I'll turn it over to Lynn. She started this idea, and she'll give you a rundown of what we're talking about. Okay?
Hello, everyone. Is it okay if I stand over here so I can have the least amount of people by my back? Is that all right?
Sure.
Great. So what I have here for you guys is just a basic outline of what we're proposing. There's still a lot of things that need to be fleshed out, but the idea is to present this information to you now so we can start the process, okay? So Parsippany's Environmental Advisory Committee would like to sponsor a vegetable-growing contest, and as you said, we'd like to have it at the Fall Festival. We figured that would be a logical place to have it. And of course, why? To promote a healthy Parsippany and to have some fun. And the goal is to start small this year and see how it goes, and then maybe we institute having a children's one in the following year, things like that. We need to do a lot of advertisements since this is new, so we need to start advertising now because all the people that do these vegetable-growing contests for the state county fair, had the Sussex County Fairgrounds, they start growing now in the Little Dixie Cups. So we want to try to encourage some really cool vegetables to come out here that are large sizes and everything, and that's why we need to start now. So local newspapers, printing online, I know we have two of them here, so hopefully they'll be interested in running some stuff for us. Wanted to put something on the website. Maybe we go after the schools with flyers, different group, I understand. Hit the library. Wanted to hit Parsippany's Twitter, Facebook. Mayor, I know you do a quarterly newsletter. We'd love to try to put something in there. I don't know what the deadline is for that.
And we can also coordinate with the schools as well.
Oh, great, great. Flyers at garden centers, we have Victory Gardens here as well, other, and we'd love to get suggestions from you guys, too, because I know you guys roam around to a lot of the different local events. Okay? So we would have to create an organizing committee, and we would ask for volunteers, maybe some of the Victory Gardens peoples down the road would be interested in joining us, some EAC members. And now we have to have some rules, we figure. We could keep it open, not ask for credentials or anything, and we might get some people outside of town, but I don't think that's what we're interested in. We're not looking to do a county fair or anything. This would just be for Parsippany residents. So we'd have to have them show driver's license or some other proof, and they have to be grown in Parsippany. I don't know, we thought about taking a photo with a timestamp, something, I don't know, we'll have to think of this, you know? Prizes, and this is where we have some legal issues that we are hoping you could help us out with. Can our committee solicit donations from local garden centers and restaurants? Anything that's food-related, we figured? Is that legal? Or can the committee offer gift cards or cash as prizes, like some of the other vegetable garden contests do? And then we want to definitely give ribbons out. I think that's a no-brainer. Judges, elected officials, Victory Gardens, other volunteers, still to be fleshed out. The table at the Fall Festival, we want to have it at a cross street because if somebody's going to bring in a huge pumpkin, they need to have access, street access, to bring in their huge pumpkin. So that's something we would like to work on. Type of vegetables that are sizable, zucchini, eggplant, tomatoes, keep it limited at first for the first year. But we also thought that we might do a play on word with Parsippany. There's parsnips, parsley, maybe we focus on that a little bit. We'll see. It might get a little crazy because those are kind of specialty items, but we'll see. We need to create an entry form, and we wanted to work with the Historical Committee. We started reaching out to them a teeny little bit, but they haven't really heard about this yet. Certainly, we'd like to have them keep records over time of all the largest and weights for all the vegetables and everything, but there was something else that you had brought up earlier, and I'm forgetting.
I'd like to look at tying it into the farming history of Parsippany.
Oh, okay, so Laura just mentioned...
The committee probably has, you know, all the photographs.
Yeah.
And this is sort of where our...
I'll repeat what she said. She just wants to tie it to our farming community, historical farming community.
Yeah, Parsippany at one time was nothing but farms.
Yeah.
So...
Sort of where the idea...
We can go back to the history books and get pictures of 287 when it was farms.
Yeah. Tie that in. And our one last need, a scale. We've got to have one somewhere around here.
I got a weight watchers more at home.
Yeah? He's kidding.
I watch the weight go up every time I sit.
If you're going to weigh pumpkins, you're going to need Jamie Scale.
Yeah. Oh, good. I have not touched it.
I didn't even go that far, did I? I know, I'll get you on the first thing else.
All right, so that's...
I just had a question. Are you going to have like, you have, I guess, sizable, you mean the biggest vegetable, and then you're saying...
Largest.
And what do you mean by the nicest?
The most perfect.
So one of the things that the vegetable, I've been doing some research that they do, is they will get three cherry tomatoes that you have to pick from your yard, and they have to be perfect, and you submit your three best cherry tomatoes. So that's what I mean by nicest. I'm just copying what the state fair does.
No, no, those are both...
And it's a whole new world. They do all kinds of cool things. So we may start with largest, but I don't know, we kind of have to get feelers of how people want to do it, if they want us to copy exactly what the state fair does on the Sussex County Fairgrounds.
No, I think you would use the two of them, the largest vegetable and then the nicest vegetable.
Yeah, they'll pair three together.
You should pick some, not like, maybe three vegetables that we would contest.
We're going to keep it simple to start. That's the whole idea.
I definitely grow the small zucchinis in the world, they just don't grow.
Well, there you go. So the last point is we are looking for more suggestions and input, and wanted to know what our next steps would be if you guys all approve this. Laura, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
You know, under the ordinance of being a town council committee, um, being a town committee, I'm sorry.
Being a town committee, that we would just, we couldn't move forward without the approval of the town council. So we're here tonight proposing it, but we thought with the historical connection to the farming in Parsippany, which would be really great for our children, and then to bring it at the Fall Festival as a highlight and have the Fall Festival sort of have this event centered around it, or at least, you know, a part of it, we thought it was just a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
We're pretty proud of it, yeah. Actually, it's Lynn's idea.
If I can advertise.
Lynn?
I know Lynn.
One thing, though, Laura...
I was wondering, maybe, Alan, you could sing your song about the apple tree.
Oh, well, it's...
I might do it live.
Make them grow.
They'll bring a crowd, but, yeah, no, no.
So I just wanted to find out what the next steps would be, if you could guide us on that.
I would think your next steps would be your next committee meeting, and the committee starts organizing it. And what I meant by, you know, Laura, with the ordinance and some things that I discussed with you that we can discuss, like tomorrow night's the next meeting?
Actually, tonight is our meeting.
All right, so whenever, there's certain things I didn't agree with in it, but that wasn't killing the ordinance. But the reason why I say that the council should be informed, you don't have to come to me for it to be informed, you have a council liaison that would do that, and it could happen very quick, so, you know, but that's all that was.
We just want to make sure we're covered, because we do want to get started.
Yeah, and doing initiatives and stuff like that, I think that's a good thing.
I would just like to offer that. I'd like to be a part of that, you know, a real active part.
You'd like to be a judge?
Um, yo, I'll be anything, yes, okay, yes, a judge.
Done, great, thanks for volunteering.
No, that'd be fun, I really find it...
You don't have to sing.
I won't sing, thank you.
I think it's a great idea.
You might make you wear a funny hat.
I will do that.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea. All in favor?
Yes.
Largest string bean's not taller than me, I'm in.
I don't know. No, they have some crazy ones that are really...
You know, Laura, I don't know if you realize, there was a book written quite a few years ago, None Out Sings Parsippany.
Yes, I know it well. We use it in the schools, yeah.
Okay, so...
The pictures in there are phenomenal.
You know, that could also be used as a resource for your...
Okay.
I don't know what is in there. I haven't seen it myself when I worked here years ago, I do recall.
Yeah, the libraries have...
I believe Jack Lingle was a big portion of that, yes.
Yeah, but there is a lot of information in there, yeah. So we could bring back, you know, a lot of the history of the town for this event, so, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President?
Communications, Correspondents?
Okay, Council President. I failed to mention something because of my running out to get something. I failed to mention one thing, and in deference to the liaison for the union, I just want to mention that, as you know, you received the documentation on the supervisor's blue-collar documents, so during the week, if you have any questions on it, I just want to let you know we worked in great concert with the folks.
Okay, great.
So I think we provided you with the original agreement, we provided you with the documentation, and if you have any questions...
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
All right, Communications, Correspondents, non-applications, any questions or concerns? All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to open up a public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso, submitted by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Please, when you come up, state your name and address, sign in. You'll be given five minutes.
There we go.
Just tap on it for a few minutes.
Yeah, tap on it. You might want to take it out, too.
Sometimes it...
It might be off now.
I think they shut it off, yeah.
Ellen was practicing singing on that earlier.
After you turn it on, it takes a second, click on, if you want to tap.
Let me try it.
Last night, they were... Nope.
Frank Kochi, 3800 Rachel Terrace, Pine Brook. I had no intention of coming back here, but unfortunately, once again, I'm compelled to. An incident happened in this township on February 26th at about 7:00 PM, and it happened at a very popular restaurant in this township where most of you frequent at times. My fiance works there as a waitress and been working there for 25 years. She gets along with everybody, and I'm quite sure some of yous know her. Well, unfortunately, while she was waiting on tables, she was notified by a coworker that there were two men in the delicatessen area that wanted to speak to her. Well, right away, she assumed it was the police, and it was something tragic pertaining to her family. She abruptly goes to the delicatessen area, and these two men, who remained seated, showed no type of courtesy to a lady. Remained seated, and the one man continued to eat his soup while this individual critiqued her on how powerful this town council is and what they can do... her on how powerful this town council is and what they can do to you. And I'm not going to go further, because to me, it's shameful and it's despicable. And I'm quite sure if I was to tell you what was said, you would be infuriated, infuriated by it. So I know, and you know, any prudent person that would hear a man would go to a woman's place of employment, distract her from her duties, okay, would raise the eyebrow of any prudent person, including a person that wore a black robe. It's wrong. It's cowardly. And when I was informed of this, when she came home from work, and I knew there was something wrong, and when I finally got it out of her, where she broke down in tears and said she felt like she was a person of the Jewish faith in Nazi Germany, taken from her workplace and interrogated, interrogated and critiqued, critiqued about this town council. And I say to this man, and I know he's here tonight, "You're a coward. You're a coward, as I would describe the Nazis, the SS, and the Gestapo. You're a coward. And if you want to deal with me, you come and see me. You don't go to a woman." Now, she don't know this man. She knows of his mother, because when he was a young little boy, his mommy would take him there for something to eat and an ice cream cone, okay? This man never wore the colors I wore, the colors of blue. He never was shot at on Ward Place and 15th Street, 11th Park, or picked a body for of a kid that was dragged by a truck. It's annoying and it's disgusting. And I'm going to bring out more while I'm here. I was asked if I'm a friend of the mayor's. My first encounter with that mayor, and he's going to tell you, was with also not only him, but Vincent Verar, when he was a councilman. And this town was subjected to problems because of the Sandy Storm, where our volunteer firefighters and our volunteer EMS weren't able to get gasoline. And through one of the town workers, Vincent Verar was contacted, and the mayor was contacted. And it was a Sunday, and they came out of their homes, and they regulated things with the police, where we were able to get our volunteer firefighters and our EMS gas. And not only get them gas, we offered them hot drinks from a friend of mine that owned a gas station. I don't live in the town, but I'm a second generation of police and fire. And when it comes to any brother and sister in law enforcement or firefighting, I'll do anything I can to help them. And that man, that mayor, whether you like him or not, he came out of his house on a Sunday, along with this Vincent Verar, I don't even know if he's here tonight, but I do know he was a councilman.
Thirty seconds, sir.
When are we going to get along? When are we going to have respect for the mayor? If you have problems, take it indoors. Don't let these citizens be confronted with any longer. They're sick of it.
Excuse me, Mr. Cochi?
Yes, sir.
How's it going, Mr. Cochi? I clearly have no understanding of what occurred on this date, but you're saying it was February 26th this year?
That's correct.
Okay. And do you mind if I ask...
At 7:00 PM.
At night?
And you have my consent, Mr. Valori, to speak to Jaffe, because I know you know her.
From what restaurant?
She's a waitress in Bellagio.
Okay, all right.
And this should tell you the same.
Okay, all right, because I have no understanding of...
As far as factual?
Okay.
And it's factual, they were at that location at 7:00 PM, because I interviewed witnesses.
Okay.
The conversation was kept in a soft tone.
Okay.
But onlookers knew there was something wrong.
Okay.
And after that coward left, okay, her coworkers, she walked around with a cloud of suspect, because they couldn't understand why two men would have a woman in a delicatessen with nobody else in there. And her boss, she was subjected to correction by her boss, why she left the floor. And she had explained because she thought it was the police.
So just want to get it correct. So February 26th, 7:00 PM, Bellagio's.
That's correct.
But there was no council members present there?
No, sir.
Okay, I just...
No, there was not.
Okay.
No, there was not.
I wasn't sure.
But unfortunately, it stems from me exercising my First Amendment right and coming here.
Okay, all right.
And that's what it stems from.
And if you don't mind, I will look into it if that's okay.
I appreciate it, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Cochi, if I may, Mr. Cochi?
Yes, sir.
So in this encounter, this person threatened you that if you came to the council meetings again?
No, no. What was said was that this council has a great deal of power, and they could do things to you, okay? I'm not going to go into detail, Mr. Mayor, because it's shameful and it interferes with the council.
I agree, I agree.
It interferes with the council, because I know if they knew what was said, it'd be infuriating, infuriated by it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Ackerman. I'm an attorney here in town, and I've been asked by a J-Go towing to speak on their behalf before the town council. I corresponded with the chief of police and sent a copy to each of you. I hope that you received the letter. Recently, my client has had what I will nicely refer to as numerous visits from the health department and the police department, none of which have resulted in the issuance of any citations or summonses for wrongdoing. My client believes that Councilman Peluso requested the police to come to their present at their premises, because he claimed that there was an illegal rooming house going on there with beds which was unfounded. There were other allegations of illegal parking and not properly maintaining the premises.
Could you just talk louder? Everyone in the back, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I've asked my client why the police were coming. They have been, and Mr. Cleffy, who is here, in fact, both of them, Vincent, has stated the police were checking to see if they were legally parking trucks on their own property. I am not aware that there are any ordinance which prohibits trucks from parking on one's property. I am not aware of any ordinance which prohibits trucks from parking on the street. On each time, the police apologized and left, the health official who visited apologized and left. If there is an issue that's ongoing, I would like to address it with either the police department, or the health department, or the zoning office. But my client would like the constant visits by the police department to stop with an eventual apology for, we were told to come here and to check out parking or illegal rooming houses. And I would like the opportunity to meet with, if necessary, with Mr. Inglisino or the mayor to discuss this, so that we can clarify any issues and put an end to this. Thank you.
Two quick questions. How many times did you officers come, if you don't mind me asking?
The zoning department came about four times.
Speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you.
The zoning department came four times, and the police department came.
And my second question, don't get offended, the address of your business?
1029 Edwards Road.
Okay.
I'm by the sewer treatment plant and the town dumps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ackerman, I will follow up with you, so that we can answer some of your questions and get you some more information. All right, thank you.
And just with the mayor, is there a possibility, you know, well, trying to get this resolved, did we get a copy of zoning reports and police department?
There are.
The functions that are, we certainly share information from, with the council at the appropriate time, but, you know, this is an administrative matter to look into. And we will do that, and information as appropriate will be shared with the council.
And the only reason I said this was to make sure everybody was doing their job properly.
Yeah, and I'll just say this, if I'm allowed to, I'm a council attorney.
You're the mayor, you can say whatever you want.
I received a phone call that someone from my office was sent down there, and I can assure you, I do not send people from my office to go do inspections. That only comes from zoning and housing. So when I got that phone call that my, the mayor recommended this, it's not, that's not true, I want to put that on the record, and when I found out, we kind of, I want to find out what kind of vehicle that was there, because I went down to housing, I went down to zoning director, and I asked her, was anybody sent out? And they told me, no, we sent nobody out. So that is a concern for me, so...
One quick question before you go. You brought up a council member's name that you thought he was the reason, can I ask why you thought that person?
Everybody who's coming is saying that, you know, this is, complaining about the road.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Everybody who's coming is saying, no, this is where it's coming from.
Okay. And I just like to follow up on that and not to try to probe here. Was it the township workers that said it, or was it just...
Well, let's, 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 let us look into the matter.
I just have one question of you, Mr. Ackerman.
At least try to put in your windows to bed, that's all.
Before our meeting, I just want to ask you why your client, not this gentleman, this is the first time I'm hearing of this. I have no idea. I just opened this letter tonight when I got it in my mail. But your other, I guess, this gentleman's brother was outside taking pictures of councilmen's councilmen's cars and license plates when I walked outside, so I just...
I'll ask him, but...
Wondering why?
I'm hearing it.
Okay.
Well, hold on, Mr. Ackerman, you had the floor for five minutes, and if, I think your five minutes has probably elapsed. So we have another person who gets another five minutes. Sir, are you represented by council as well, Mr. Ackerman? Or is... I'm just here as an innocent bystander. I came... Okay, so then you get another five minutes. You get the microphone, just state your name, not you, him.
Give it to him.
You have the lawyer. You have to give your, your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes.
Just tap the top, it should be on. There you go.
My name's Vincent Cleffy Paul.
It's very nice to meet you. Before, when I was outside, and I'm one of the property owners at 1029 Edwards Road also, before when I was outside, I was having trouble with the phone. You walked up on the back of me, said, "Why are you taking pictures of my vehicles?" I showed your officer that came and asked me for all my ID, and he's right there. I had no pictures of any cars on my phone, okay? Forgive me, but I got to say, your delivery was all wrong. If you wanted to see what was on my phone, you should have said, "Sir, why are you, why are you, why are you taking pictures of my car?" I looked at you like you were out of your mind, honest to God. Your delivery was all wrong, but I'm not, I'm not here to correct you on it. Obviously, you, you have a job to do. I do not have a picture of your car. I'm having trouble with my phone, okay? I showed your officer my phone, he took my ID and everything. I don't know what I do with a picture of your phone, of your car, or whatever. I don't even know which car was yours, okay? Every time I hit the phone and hold it up, it blinks, okay? So let me, and you looked at me, you were talking to me like I was a 14-year-old kid. I have five kids of my own, I would expect to be a parent to do that. So on a, on a better hand, I extend my hand to you, if you're willing to accept it, and I apologize, but on the same token, I would expect the same respect, because like you said, we, all we have is our word. If we don't have our word, we have nothing, okay? And I want you to know, there is no problem here.
Okay, no, I didn't think there was. If you're done, I'll, I'll answer.
Okay.
Okay. When I walked outside, you were holding your phone up, and you were zooming in on a councilman's car. I saw the car on your phone. I asked you, I said, "Excuse me, can I help you?" You said, "No." I said, "Why are you taking pictures of councilmen's cars?" You said, "I'm not taking pictures." I said, "I just saw you taking a picture." You were zooming in on the car. You said, "If I have a problem with it, make a complaint."
And I did, and I did. But like I said, I wasn't taking pictures of cars.
Okay, well, you were zooming in on a, you had an off, you had a councilman's car. You were zooming in on the car, on his license plate on the back of his car. So I don't know if you snapped off any pictures, but...
I will reassure you. And I have a sworn officer right there in the left-hand side of the room. He asks me for my ID, I furnished him with my ID, I also furnished him with my phone. And you could ask the gentleman if I had any pictures of any cars outside.
I'm not saying that...
You just have to answer. Yeah. Okay.
No, I'm just saying, I don't have, sir, this is the first time I've seen this. I don't know anything about it.
I just don't want you to think there was a problem that don't exist.
No, I just, you know, it's just a little odd that you walk outside and see people taking...
I have a problem with the phone, Paul.
Okay?
Okay? Honest to God.
Yeah, I agree. Listen, I'll, look, you want to shake my hand tomorrow?
I just felt it was kind of odd, you know? I felt like I was talking to my 16-year-old daughter. Honest to God. I want you to know, we're here to help you, okay?
Look, you're a business owner in town.
And that goes for everybody here. And yes, I am.
You're a business...
And I will help you out.
And I think that's a good thing.
I've known Brian, I've seen Brian around. If Parsippany needs something, you could count on a J-Go stepping up to the plate and giving a hand.
Sir, I'm, for me personally, I'm very happy that you've decided to have your business in Parsippany. I appreciate that.
Well, we're looking to grow, and we're looking to work with the community.
Very good, thank you.
You know, anything the community needs, if they have any needs, come speak to us personally. We're normal guys, we all put our pants on the same line.
Thank you.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Please make sure you sign in. Oh, excuse me. Make sure you sign in.
There's a piece of paper there, just to sign.
Thank you.
I get charged from the auto credit.
All right, see no one else come forward?
I heard. They're going to sign.
It's Ryan Spies Day.
Or paperwork?
Are they two different ones, or are they...
They're all the same, but just five packets.
You want me to take that one?
I'm just...
You want that one, John?
Yeah, they're coming.
I found the paperwork.
Okay, I'll take this here.
It's about open space, I know already, so. You guys will get the email. Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots, red.
Have you just talk louder? Thank you. On January 20th, I opened copies of the minutes of the open space committee meetings from 2010 up until the present day. Even though the town's website has a placeholder page for the minutes, none were or are currently up there. The following day, I received my request back. In total, there are 37 pages, which you have right there in front of you. Included are minutes of a closed session meeting from February 2nd, 2012, which began at 6:00 PM and ended at 6:20 PM. Notice that nothing is redacted at all. Also included are minutes of another closed session meeting.
On January 20th, I opened copies of the minutes of the open space committee meetings from 2010 up until the present day, even though the town's website has a placeholder page for the minutes none were or are currently up there. The following day, I received my request back. In total, there are 37 pages, which you have right there in front of you. Included are minutes of a closed session meeting from February 2nd, 2012, which began at 6:00 PM and ended at 6:20 PM. Notice that nothing is redacted at all. Also included are minutes of another closed session meeting. That meeting was held on June 12th, 2012, and began at 6:15 and ended 15 minutes later at 6:30. During this 15-minute meeting, three items were discussed. They were the three, same three items discussed on February 2nd, but this time, the three subjects were all redacted. I recently received the January invoices from Mr. Inglesino's firm. On January 21st, the day after I made my Oprah request, and the same day I received these minutes, Mr. Inglesino's firm billed the township $287.50 for 2.3 hours of work for, quote, "redacting minutes responsive to Nelson's Oprah request." My question is, how can it possibly be that one page took over two hours and cost nearly $300 to redact? How could any attorney bill this kind of money for this kind of work? And even if the attorney who had redacted these pages had read all 37 pages to determine what to redact, he shouldn't have, because 35 of the 37 pages were already approved minutes and should have already been up on the town's website. On January 29th, I made a different Oprah request. I requested all Aurora bills related to the AT&amp;T investigation from a few years ago. You have in front of you the eight pages of invoices I received back a few days later. There aren't too many redactions there. How much was billed for that? Those eight pages, five of which have some redactions? Town was billed four and a half hours for redacting a portion of five of those eight pages that you have in front of you. Taxpayers want to know, the council should want to know, how, just these two line items out of tens of thousands of line items of bills that has been submitted to this town in five-plus years? Just, it's just a simple answer. Now, if anyone is to claim that finding or assembling the documents I requested required most of the billing time, Mr. Council President, in Mr. Inglesino's contract with the township, in part, it states that retrieving, file organization, and assembly materials are not to be billed to the township. And if anyone dare suggest that is because people of me, like me, or Frank Hayhill, or Roy Mesmer, or Papatacho, or anybody else who makes Oprah requests, that it's our fault for what's driving up the legal bills, it was exactly because I opened these Aurora bills that I discovered that $1,022 and sales tax was improperly billed to the town. And it's my understanding that since I brought this to Allen's attention, the town has recouped that money. By getting back to the open space minutes, on two recent occasions, Ruth Pace's property was publicly discussed. The block and lot number in the minutes was block 703 Lot 3. And since the attorney from Mr. Inglesino's firm presumably spent two hours reviewing these minutes, do you think that he would have noticed that the block and lot number were not Ms. Pace's, but instead Councilman DePiero's? Do you think that it would have been prudent that the township attorney in attendance at these meetings had told Mr. DePiero that as a member of the open space committee, he was voting to have the town purchase his own house? Yeah, but the odds on that were just unbelievable, Mike, that's your house. That's it.
Just a quick question. The $287.50, what was that, how many hours were billed for that?
2.3, he said.
2.3 hours.
Okay. And then the, the other?
I highlighted it for you, it's on the page.
Yeah, then I, then I see the Aurora report here. How much was charged for that particular bill?
Four and a half hours.
And, and what was the total value?
$562. $562.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm just trying to follow this here.
Listen, it's eight pages, in a nutshell, it's eight pages of documents. Of those eight pages, a portion of five of those pages are redacted. But the, the question is, did it really take four and a half hours to do?
You know what, Mr. Nelson, for a man who lies about his college degree, to shoot, to, to attack the credibility, to attack the credibility of people who work for my law firm is a disgrace. Let me answer your questions. Are you done?
Well, it depends on what your response is.
Are you done? I will speak after you're done. You done?
Excuse me.
Are you done?
I don't know.
You have your five minutes.
The other question I have, when you said that money was recouped from Ellen, Ellen, was there money recouped for these bills?
We, we sent a payment, and we removed that, the interest on the two Aurora bills and the one a payment to Aurora.
So how much was total recouped, or getting recouped?
Well, it's not recouped, it's just not pay, paying them the bill, we filled it up.
So how much is that?
I think it was, one was over $5,000, and then the other was a $4,000 and a thousand something, so I guess.
This, this one was $1,022.
Yeah, right.
I just have one question.
Okay, just, let me just, just one thing. And again, Mayor, I know you don't want to, obviously, and we don't want to wrestle here, and John, it's not against you. And Mike, this gets back to my concerns about an audit. These are simple bills that were just obviously found, and obviously, we're going to be getting recouped on that. So again, wouldn't you think that it would be in our best interest for the town, the taxpayers, for accountability, that there could be a possibility of other, you know, say mistakes or misunderstandings? Because I will tell you, I had home, I literally have two file, file boxes, probably about 18 inches high each, for 2014 and 2013, and I went through those bills. And again, I didn't go through all of them, and I did find issues that I had concerns about. So my point is, I just think that if we're more transparent, it puts everybody at ease, because we can't insult Mr. Nelson because he's finding, you know, thousands of dollars to be reimbursed back to the town, whatever the opinion is of that person, you gotta, you know, leave the personalities out of it. But if there's money that needs to be recouped back to the town, I think it's only right to the taxpayers. And that's all. I'm not trying to buy you or.
The auditor is going, is auditing all expenditures in the township. That's his job.
The auditor?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me ask you a question.
He's not conducting a criminal investigation, he's conducting an audit.
Mr. DePiero, you're, I, I don't know why you keep saying criminal investigation. Our audit that was agreed upon wasn't a criminal investigation, and then you're telling me this auditor, because I will bring in the two literally stacks of bills, 18 inches high each, that fill up a whole file box, you're telling me the auditor, Mr. Ray Saronelli, who wanted to do our audit, he's going to say 2014, all the bills are complying. So we're going to suggest Mr. Saronelli went through each one of those charges? I mean, we have sales tax that weren't paid. So I, I'm just, I'm really, I'm still dumbfounded here that we don't want to put some security measures in place. I mean, we're willing to do it with a computer system to make sure nobody steals anything, and I'm not suggesting anybody stole anything, but there is human error. And if there's money owed back to the town, or if there's questions, concerns about it, we, as a legislative body, the council, has every right to ask these questions, and I don't know why everybody gets so offended. Because this Aurora bill has nothing to do with the Captain matter. This Aurora bill has to do with the Verizon bill. Okay?
Jonathan, one quick question for you, Jonathan.
All right, you're, just one second.
Your time's up.
I know, but this is, this is important.
Oh, just.
I asked, I, I sent a private email to the business administrator to handle this internally so I wouldn't have to get up here and ask this question. And it was just a simple question, not accusing anybody, if this is, if somebody was doing anything improper, I'm asking, why was it billed?
Real quick, though, you sent a private email, but then you sent an email to all the council members as well.
Of course I did.
Well, that's, you can't send it, you can't do it that way, they can't, and you know that, Jonathan, you were a councilman at one time. So why would you, you know?
I didn't, was, I never had a plan to come here publicly and talk about.
Well, let Jonathan Inglesino answer.
And all, I think, I think we all deserve an answer of.
You're gonna get one.
Then let's, let's hear it.
I was aware, Mr. Nelson, that you were making inquiries about the opens, about the invoices relative to open space. Quite frankly, as you point out, it's 37 pages. When a lawyer reviews those 37 pages, first of all, there are a number of transactions in there that are going to be at various stages. Some are appropriate to give the information to you, some are not, okay? I don't, I'm not the one in my office who spends my time doing this, and you don't want me doing this type of work.
I know that. I didn't use your name on this.
So my associate had to, before reviewing it, assemble the minutes, which go back three years.
Which you don't bill the town for.
Had to, had to speak. The assemblage relates, in the contract, Mr. Nelson, relates to secretarial time, okay? What we, what you don't want to pay for in a law firm is for secretaries to copy and assemble, and we don't charge for that. We charge for lawyer time, okay? That lawyer had to go locate and assemble the minutes, okay?
Of which two pages were closed session. The other one was all in the public domain.
He let you speak, Jonathan, he let you speak.
Your five minutes is expired.
You're right, I'll turn this off.
Okay? Then he has to talk to the person in town hall to address the status of the transactions. That person's a new person. They then had to contact the person who had retired to go through the status of, of whatever deals were there. Then they had to go through and redact it, okay? To say that that would take two hours to do, I would expect that would take two, two and a half hours to do, to go through each one, because you know what, Mr. Nelson, my office is responsible for what goes out of it, okay? And we're not perfect, but we're pretty darn careful about what we do. And the last thing we're going to want to do is to start releasing information that shouldn't be released, so then we're going to get sued by some property owner, or some good Samaritan is going to bring an action before the Office of Government records, which has happened before, and we're undefeated in those actions, okay? So there's more that goes into it than just sitting down, your five minutes is expired. There's more that goes into this than just sitting down and reading 37 pages like it's a novel, okay? And, and frankly, Mr. Nelson, your questions from my perspective are absurd, and I'm not going to spend my day going through and answering these kinds of questions for you. I did it tonight because I was asked to, but questions that fall into this category in the future, I'm just not gonna, I'm just not gonna waste my time.
All right, bottom line is this, Ellen, how much do we get reimbursed? How much do we get reimbursed on his inquiry?
The sales tax.
It wasn't just Jonathan, also Roy had actually brought up the first, the, the.
Yeah, the sales tax.
Sales tax, yeah. So there were two sales tax, two Aurora sales tax, one for the, with regard to the sewer plant, and then that, I think that's one, Jonathan, you found the one on.
How much were they?
One was a thousand plus, the other one was 4,000, and then there was a $5,000 Aurora. If we have a settlement.
So about $10,000?
About $10,000. If we have an Aurora settlement of $220,000, when, when that other bill came through, which was back in August, we felt that should not be charged, because then it would be $225,000. So we did our research and we found that.
The only thing I suggest in the near future, so I don't want to make you a nervous wreck over here, if there are inconsistencies.
I am not a nervous wreck.
If there is.
When it comes to numbers and my, my veracity, yeah.
At least make us aware of this, because I, I didn't know it was this much. And then secondly, with the billing onto these minutes for 2010, did we get reimbursed on anything, or Ellen, these minutes for 2010, he's talking about 2.3 hours for $287?
There's no reimbursement for work that was actually.
Well, that's what's.
No, there's no reimbursement, the work that was, services that were rendered.
Okay, so the sales tax. Okay.
Sales tax gets reimbursed, that's, that's a different, through credit, but you don't reimburse for, for work that was performed.
I'll track this down.
And I'd, I'd like to make another statement, if I will. I never, no one up here that I know of, Mr. Nelson, ever inquired about you, Mr. Mesmer, and Ms. Patacho doing Oprah requests. You brought that up tonight, so you have a lot to do with it, so I have no issue with it.
Tell them, let them come back to you. But that's not. On February 10th, I asked for statuses on the golf investigation and the sewer investigation. I appreciate it, Paul, if you can get me some answers tonight. I want to know if these investigations are still ongoing. I want to know if the Moss County prosecutors are investigating, or who's investigating it? And if they are, and are done, can we have the results of it? I'm also waiting to hear from Ellen regarding my complaint. Got a couple of things tonight, but. On that one, Pat, oh, I don't interrupt her till her five minutes are up. I have an answer on that. Okay, thank you. I'd also like another status of contracts that applies, and Chief Phillips, I know we are way over budget in our overtime, so I want to see what we're doing with that, I would appreciate it. Brian Stanton, I, I see you getting very upset up there regarding everything that's going on here, and understandably so, a lot of the residents are too, but I would ask you to stop getting so excited, only because.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask you not to make comments during the meeting.
Okay. That's no problem, that's no problem. Because this all started with that January 13th, 2013 meeting, okay? Yes, I do, I like to bring it up, because that's where it came from. My five minutes, please, shush, okay? You've never, again truthful with that. Mike DePiero. As I said, I've always respected you, I really have, but you have flipped on the forensic audit. You did not care about Aurora when this was being discussed for the last year and a half. People have been questioning it, residents have been questioning it, and nobody decided to do anything about it until just now, until this last couple of months, okay? I don't want to see electioneering up here, I don't want to see it myself, okay? You're up here for a reason, everybody. Give us the courtesy of giving us good government. And as far as the council being respectful to the mayor, it works both ways. Let's remember that. And just in case, because I seem to be corrected every time I come in here and I mention something, in case anybody's interested or wants to hear the facts of the Krefi case, should attend a court hearing tomorrow, uh, sorry, Thursday, March 12th, 8:30 AM, Moss Town Courthouse, Room 14. I've been there, and I'll be there that day.
Well, that's not the Krefi case, that's the, that's the gun permit case.
It's the Krefi case, it's one of the cases.
No, it's not that.
It's concerning Mr. Krefi, okay, his gun permit case. If you're interested.
That's what it is.
Then come in. So petty. Also, the thing that gets me is that resolution that you guys put forward and adopted on October 8th of 2013 was the reimbursement of legal fees, which I was totally against, that I stated the reasons why, because it wasn't necessary, it was never necessary before to have something like this. We had a council president, a mayor, and an attorney meet at an unspecified ti, uh, at a specified time in a specified location. Lawyers had to be gotten. So this, and I asked that night whether or not this was directly in result to repaying some legal reimbursements, and nobody answered. And then we found out, yes, you were reimbursed and the mayor was reimbursed. And now with everything going on, the mayor after you, you after the mayor, my favorite person over there, Mr. Inglesino, you all are going to cost this town exorbitant amount of money. And like I said before, you're not hurting anybody but the taxpayers, and you're all looking quite silly. For the people that are sitting up here and being of one party, you're a disgrace, okay? We need to get along, we need to stop things. Let's not talk about what this council can do and what it can't do, okay? Because to me, this form has all of a sudden changed.
30 seconds.
What we've done in all prior years, since this administration, things have changed. And you know it, and it's changed for the worse. Thank you.
Pat, I just want to state it for the record that I was not council president in 2013.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
She meant, but let me.
No, I know.
Let me just say one thing, council president, this is really for you more. I am trying to refrain from speaking about the case, because I think that, you know, you heard, you heard it, but when, when, no, I'm not, I'm talking to the council president, but when you get questioned from a resident that brings it up, it's only natural to make statements, and I am trying to stay away from that because of sensitivity. Ms. Patacho comes up and always has to make the comments with regards to it, of course, I have to make the statement I make, because it has nothing to do with that case, and that's misleading. And I don't think that a member of the public should come up and mislead in that manner. Mr. Mayor of May, the, the case that Ms. Patacho is speaking about is a, is a, has nothing to do with the township. I know, that's my point. It is a, it is a, an action by Mr. Krefi who was seeking a right to carry a firearm. It's his right to make that application. That is what the proceeding is about. The township is not a party to that case, the township is not represented in that case, township does not participate in that case. Township is not represented in that case, as it is, as it is not a party to the case. It doesn't mean that the township doesn't have an interest in certain aspects of the case, but the township is not a party to the case, and therefore, is not represented in the case as it relates to that case. It's not an action in which the township is named as an adverse party.
I just have, I'm getting more confused on everything that went on here. I think that she's bringing up a point she had made earlier, Pat, was Mr. Tremblay being there for that. So again, if it's a gun permit to carry, no. I don't know if he was on your behalf, or the town's behalf, I have no idea.
Yeah, Mr. Tremblay did attend the last meeting, because it's, the township doesn't township doesn't want to be adversely prejudiced, uh, by, uh, things that may happen in, in a case in which the township is not a party, but which, um, could arguably have an impact on a township, uh, related case. And, uh, so Mr. Tremblay was there to, uh, try and help ensure that the township's interest would not be prejudiced, um, in a separate case, um, and that is why he was there.
I, I just have to ask you one technical correct question here. You're the attorney. Is, with his presence being there, is he allowed to speak on behalf of the town to the judge?
Well-
And the only reason I'm saying this is that-
That's a question for the judge.
Everything is on audio, video, it's there. My opinion is that they could go ask for a copy of the audio and video instead of having him there paying for it. That's just me.
Well, he's not, he's not, not there just to, um, uh, just to watch.
What's he doing, having coffee there, hanging out?
No, he's, he is there, uh, to attempt to ensure, uh, whether it be by, uh, seeking permission to make an appearance in the case, um-
But for a gun permit?
Or by other, no, the gun, again-
The gun, carry permit.
The township does not have an interest, uh, or a care in, in terms of whether or not Mr. Carifi gets a gun permit. That's not what the township's interest is. The township's interest is with respect, uh, to findings that may be made by the court, um, that may have an adverse, uh, effect on other matters that are, in which the township does have an interest. That's the reason.
All right.
And I know that's a technical explanation, but it was a technical question, and it's a correct answer.
Okay, no, it, it sounds like it's a correct answer, but I would say it as the legislative body who controls the purse strings, we have to deal with a budget, wouldn't it be better, perhaps, if he stayed home or in his office, and then he got a CD sent to him, and he could sit there and review it?
No, again, again, Mr. Valori, if, if, he wasn't there, he wasn't asked to go, uh, to simply, to simply watch. Um, he was, he was there to, uh, to do what he could to ensure that anything that occurred in that court would not have an adverse impact on the township. And that could mean, and as I understand it, he did address the court briefly, um, and as I understand it, also spoke with, with counsel, um, who was engaged, uh, in the case. And so his assignment in being there, his reason to be there was not just to be a, a, a watcher, uh, but was to participate on an as-needed basis to ensure that the township's interest would not be prejudiced in another proceeding.
I, I have to ask you this sixty-four thousand dollar question. Is he gonna be there on Thursday doing the same thing, which I don't think he did too much of and was paid good money? Is he gonna be there Thursday?
Well-
Not like I don't, like Mr. Tremblay, I just want to-
When, when you say he didn't do anything, Mr. Valori, I think that that is, um, that is not an accurate, uh, statement, and it's a statement that I would-
Okay.
-disagree with as a township attorney.
Just from the observations I was told, I mean, okay. So is he gonna be there Thursday?
Uh, I don't know yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Go ahead, Roy.
Roy Mesmer, 10 John Bligh Drive, I kind of forgot what I was gonna talk about here. Ah, boy. You know, I don't want to give a little homily because I've only got five minutes, but who gives a darn? If our allies listened to these meetings and read the Star Ledger every day, we wouldn't have any allies, the two allies we have out there.
We don't have them now.
Probably have none.
Where's that?
Yeah, I got the mic. Hello? Okay. Oh. I hate going before Mr. Manning, but again, tonight, Jonathan just asked me to say this, I'm just saying, thirty-five out of thirty-seven pages were open space. I don't know what you guys got, and I don't know, really know what I'm saying. But Mr. Inglesino, as you know, nobody puts words in my mouth except for that time. Mr. Inglesino has stated time and time again to me when I set up my little board over here, that money is from the trust account. I just want to set the record straight, this is not to beat up Mr. Inglesino, maybe he's made a mistake, but here's his 2014 1099. On my advice, when he first paid attorney in the town, you did set it up, it's a trust account, it's a different, it's not included in it, almost nine hundred thousand now. Number one.
It was two 1099s?
Yeah.
Okay.
It has been since his first year, and I commended that to him, and he thanked me at the time, but I didn't bill him. Okay, uh, sales tax on Aurora, I know it's been brought up, I'm the one that found it, I'm the one that saw it, um, and I, I immediately went to Ellen and to Ann, supposedly it's been rectified, but Mr. Inglesino, everybody's entitled to a mistake, your firm, the competent people that you say that you have, but that was a big mistake. That was out there, and it had teeth on it, it would have bit, bit somebody. Regarding Manifusco, um, you know, I opened this a long time ago for something else, and it just hit me right in the face. I said this last week, and I'll say it again, and I'll say it again, the charges that your firm charged this town for the Manifusco was ridiculous. Thirteen thousand dollars, I'm the one that started that, nothing, nobody, including the mayor at the time when he was a councilman, you would have not, never gone after Manifusco if it wasn't for me. The amount of money we got, the amount of money he's been paying back, it's a joke. And again, the law firm made thirteen thousand dollars upfront, we're not getting our money upfront. Regarding the memos that I write, I want to thank the people who do get back to me. Next topic, Bob Campbell, that deals, I, I, I'm very well aware of, you know, who I met with several times regarding Aurora, how he got here, how the firm got here, his reputation, where he's from, his schooling, et cetera, et cetera, but I do want to interject this. When Obama finishes his four years, the second term, another three years about, we will have had twenty-eight years of presidents from Ivy League schools. Now, I don't think highly of Ivy League schools, because I had a rub elbows with guys from Ivy League schools, and they've never impressed me. Look at the, the condition of this country. So with that said, education, where you go to school, it's never impressed me. It's the person, his empirical knowledge, or her empirical knowledge. But I do want to think, I think the town, the taxpayers deserve, uh, the status of Bob Campbell. I think that guy is gonna get a lawsuit money that's gonna make the Pizzano money look like petty cash. Next topic, Mr. Mayor, this is why I'm here tonight. Well, before I get there, I'm gonna say something about the, uh, billing. How a company, how a company like Aurora could build this town, that amount of money, and then reduce it by sixty percent? I know if any one of you there went to somebody, whether it was your plumber, your electrician, your auto mechanic, your roofer, and you said, "I, I think this bill's too high," and he reduced it by sixty percent on the spot, you knew there was something wrong, and that's what ticks me off, big time, about this billing. Plus, I don't know when on closed session, you know, I, I, I never inquire, I'm the man of rules and regulations, I don't like a lot of the rules and regulations I see in this country, but until they're changed, I abide by them. Okay, Mr. Mayor, this is what I want to talk to you about, and this does deal with you, these guys don't have any idea what's going on. I mean, I give them my paperwork, but that's not their job, I don't even want to call them part-time, uh, uh, stipend that they get or whatever you want to call it, they're not employees. I do want to read everybody something, as Mr. DiPiero knows, I don't forget much, I read everything, it's giving me that compliment.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, shoot. Okay, a pledge to fight taxed, uh, housing. This was in the Star Ledger after Mr. Barbario won the mayoral election, November 12th, 2009. "I will be very aggressive," said Barbario, "a councilman who will be mayor in January." Mr. Mayor, you haven't been aggressive.
I disagree with all you guys.
There's been, there's been a lot of problems, your own friend had to come to me, okay? That's not right. I'm not getting paid, and I brought a lot of money into this town over the years, a lot of money. And here's the report from two weeks ago, I have not gotten a response, and Jennifer Collins, or whatever her new name is-
Time's up.
She doesn't know what she's doing.
Okay, I'm gonna respond to Mr. Mesmer, I know you can't wait. I know you met with my friend, and, um, I, I also met with him, I met with him prior to, to even you meeting with him, just so you know. Uh, and, uh, well, and I'll tell you what he said. It basically said you had a political agenda, because all you talked to him about was attorney bills. Attorney bills, that's all you talked to him about, you know, basically, no, 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 boy, I'm responding to you.
You're a liar.
I'm responding to you. You don't have to tape me, this meeting's taped. I am not lying, that's exactly what he said to me. Boy, you just don't like it when someone disagrees with you.
You're lying.
That's exactly what he said to me.
Okay.
How do you know about all this stuff?
Mr. Council President, if I, if I may, just, um, correct one thing for the record, because I, I think the record should be at least accurate with regard to the 1099s. Um, the 1099 that is non-trust account related also reflects, uh, monies that are paid, uh, to the firm as reimbursement for professional, uh, fees that are paid by the firm to other town professionals. So, um, frequently what happens, Mr. Mesmer, is take Wildlife Preserves case, for example. Um, we're in litigation with Wildlife Preserves, um, Wildlife Preserves has submitted expert reports, township has to submit expert reports, we have to go out and engage an expert, we pay that expert out of my business account, it's not paid out of the trust account, and...
I filed a hard total.
No, we did pay, does not pay out of the trust account, because there aren't trust fund monies on the trust fund account to pay the town experts. I pay that out of, out of-
I have to say something about the bills.
I front the money out of the business account. The money is then replenished by the township into the business account. All of those amounts of monies are also included on the 1099, so don't just say that when you look at a 1099 from my operating account, that all of that money reflects payment for services to my firm, because that's not true. And that's the point that I've been making, not that it's just, the difference is just the trust fund monies, you've mischaracterized what I've said, and I hope what I just, uh, stated would help to clarify things a little bit more. I know with your Cornell sweater on tonight, you're feeling very intelligent.
Roy, I'll just do a follow-up, John. See, there's a lot of deep on here. Okay, so did you make seven hundred thousand dollars, nine hundred thousand dollars, how much did you make that, about?
For what?
On that 1099, that's reflected on there.
I don't, I'm not gonna, I, I don't have 1099s.
Okay, I'm gonna expand on 1099. First, Louie, the, the 1099, basically, I'm gonna break it all out. Eight twenty-two is not the amount of money that has been, that, uh, the township attorney has been paid personally, okay? There are other fees in there, and we're gonna break that out.
Has his name on there, though?
Uh, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm fronting money on township's behalf, whatever you're reimbursed.
There's forty thousand for your Oprah request in 2013.
Mr. Valori's kept us busy.
If they had a secretary, too, you're paying minimal fee.
We can't have secretaries doing legal work, Mr. Valori, that would be malpractice.
That's why we have to re-engineer the system.
Good evening, Jerry Manning, Rainbow Lakes, peddlerman at the council.
Jerry, they're only, they're not, they don't hear you.
The mic.
Can you hear it?
I don't think it's on. Yeah, it's on, but take it out.
That's good, take it out, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I'll ask your indulgence to let me speak without interruption.
Please keep it down back there. Please keep it down back there.
I'd ask your indulgence to let me speak tonight without any interruption. If you'd like to comment, and I'll welcome it, please wait until I'm finished. Last month, Mike Damiro got three minutes of my five minutes, and I was cut off by the president. Thank you. Now, some members of the council, then and now, campaigned vigorously against Waterview. If it had been approved, it would have brought to the town a much-needed rateable, and also high-end residence units with an additional property tax increase. It was stated by, uh, Councilman Carifi, he was against it as a quality of life issue. My question is, what quality of life? It's on Route 46, a business corridor. The property is bordered on the east by an office building, and on the west by an office building, a gas station, and a Dunkin' Donuts. Hmm. In an attempt to mollify the naysayers, the town, the town administrator put together a proposal agreeable to the developer that would have created the buffer zone, that would have satisfied most of the naysayers. The tres caballeros on the council campaigned with their cohorts on the freeholder board to deny the request for green acres funds for the proposal. Is it just a coincidence that all those involved have names that end in a vowel? They're saying, if the developer goes forward with a plan to COA in Trenton and gets it approved, it'll cost the township hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to support affordable housing units. Hmm. At last month's meeting, Councilman Carifi lectured me on putting his life on the line as a sheriff's officer. Well, now, for the record, I spent two years in Germany in the Army of Occupation. I served with a provisional battalion in the 12th Infantry Regiment, 4th Infantry Division. Our charge was to protect the full gap in the event that the Russians decided to overstep their boundaries. If the school system hadn't stopped teaching history and geography, you would know the significance of that assignment and where it is. Oh, and, uh, that all happened before Mr. Carifi was agreeing in his father's eyes. Thank you.
Okay, wait, I'm gonna, first off, Mr. Manning, I never said that you never did anything, you attacked my credibility, so I stated to you what I had done for over twenty-five years in my career. Secondly, you asked me how, and it is true, I was against Waterview from the very beginning, and I still am, and you say, "How could it affect the quality of life?" Can you honestly stand there right now and tell me that if that development went in up there, that that would not affect those people's property values, for one? That that would not, the property values of the people that live in that area, that it would not affect them? Can you say that it will not increase traffic in that area? I'll just start with those two things right there. Can you honestly stand there right now and say that that development up there would not increase that? No, you can't, because you know that would be the, the fact. So as far as quality of life, that would affect the quality of life of many of the residents in our town. Thank you.
Um, I just, but one, one thing about property values, I spoke to the tax assessor during this process, and, um, property values, um, in his opinion, would not have been affected with regards to that, um, project. Of course, you know, council president's correct, you would have more traffic, you're building retail, there's no doubt about that.
Do you mind if I say a few words?
That's all.
Jerry, Jerry, hello?
You can't hear me.
Jerry, Jerry.
Let's talk. Yeah, just, just for the record, uh, I admire you coming up here and asking questions. I, obviously you could see, I, I love debating everyone, and at the end of the day, I, I really, as much as I debate John, I, I truly don't dislike him, um, we all have a job to do, as much as the mayor and I go at it, but one thing I will have to say, and I will never, ever, especially being up here as a councilperson, to even suggest that the folks up here whose names ended a vowel, I get very offended from, okay? And the reason why I do is because I'm Italian, and I'm a Portuguese, all right? And my wife is Spanish, and if my daughter was sitting in the audience here, right? Because my family members are very diversified, right? They would be insulted by that. So just you being an American soldier would know anybody, the values of what the atrocities that took place in World War II because of biased type of verbiage that you put out of your mouth. So please, you come up here to this mic here, you, that's right, you have a, a right to say things, but you're not gonna offend me with my nationality or anybody else. So if they want to sit here quiet, that's fine, but I am not going to take you making any suggestions, even making an innuendo, a vowel, what is that, because, because is this mafia connected? You know, you know, go a little bit more about that, what you mean by that, but don't dare come up here and say something that is derogatory or biased, okay? I don't think anybody else appreciates that in the audience here. Thank you.
And just one quick thing on Waterview, I also voted on the original project. I thought it was too much for what they came out with, and I was hoping for a compromise, and we never really got to see the compromise, it was ended in courts.
Nicholas Homack, Lake High Watch, I'd like to remind Mr. Manning that the Russians were our allies, and they sacrificed twenty-six million people, and they had no intention of going through any gap against the American army. The Cold War began even before the Hot War ended.
You should have talked to my father then, he fought in Berlin.
All right, let him go with his-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There wasn't any American soldiers in Berlin when the combat took place.
But that was four major battles over there, so...
It wasn't Berlin.
All right, give Nick a credit on his time here.
This guy, you gotta be kidding me, making that comment. All right, go ahead. I'm gonna respond to the comment, I have to respond.
All right.
Well, no American soldiers fought in the Battle of Berlin, so... Uh, Mr. Inglesino, you brought up about the COA agreement, and you did say that you at least suspected or hinted at it was favorable to developers. Uh, I, I don't think so, I think they went back to square one where they were before, but I'd like to remind you, this town is hanging out in the wind because they, they don't want to conform to regional master planning. Under the regional master plan, precipice obligation under COA is less than it is. We have legal protections and everything that goes with it and all these benefits. We are more susceptible to developers like RD or people who think that they run this town, because they come into town- town, because they come into town, and if the wrong people are in power, they can do whatever they want. And everybody's zealous for an outside entity against their own community. And anyone that looks, you could look on one end of the highway and the other end of the highway, side of the highway, it's almost two different worlds. That landscape, Waterview, the Remus Ridge, one of the original American landscapes here that remain in Precipony, is a guardian that defends that old traditional neighborhood back there. And once again, we're living with the water underneath our feet, and that's the least that anybody thinks about, is that water. That is an aquifer recharge, it has forest, it has trees, and I could say with these other things going on here in the town, I don't understand it, $2 million, artificial turf, where's the due diligence? Artificial turf is not, there's more negative than positive things about it, there's even an inquiry right now into Congress. I would have to say this, no proper due diligence was due with this Board of Education thing, and our taxpayers' money suddenly being found out of nowhere, now being used for artificial turf. Shouldn't that money go toward some educational, some spectrum of a wholesome education? Is it just a, or the sports fans have taken over this town? So I live in a sports arena, and the people believe the American army fought in the Battle of Berlin, that's where I'm living.
I'm going to answer your question. Firstly, I thought you were done, I guess different clock.
You also mentioned about misleading information. Now, at the planning board meeting the other night, you got a chance in front of the football crowd to say that we missed an opportunity for open space.
We did.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did.
Morris County, it's right in the papers, one of the worst applications ever that they ever saw for open space, and that's a fact, too. So, and it was a deal, it was a deal to let the developer go ahead and do what he had to do, and give him, us pay for a buffer zone that he would have had to provide anyway. So when you say about a missed opportunity, it wasn't a missed opportunity, it was something that you should be glad, but you're not. I still believe you do not have any resent, not resentment, you don't have any remorse at all about anything that took place during Waterview, and you haven't learned anything.
Listen, I'll let you finish.
Wait, are you done? Are you done?
All right, let's first go back, when you were talking about the open space, and I, we're going to go to two things about open space last night, you were talking about using open space trust fund for the fields, and that was another thing I said, but we did miss an opportunity. I don't agree with the Morris County Open Space Committee for voting that down, I don't. Am I, you went, I let you speak. Okay, I let you speak, and first, I want to get on to the Berlin thing, because I know we didn't fight in Berlin, we were outside Berlin, but we should have been in Berlin. Bottom line, when you sit there and you say, "Mr. Manning, the Russians weren't our enemy," they were our enemies. That's number two, number two. Number three about open space, yeah, and what did I say? We have to have a willing seller. We don't have a willing seller for that property. And I had the gentleman from Mountain Lakes come up again. Mountain Lakes doesn't want to contribute a nickel to all this. So Precipony has to take the brunt, and with this decision today, I bet you this, I'm not, that that property value has increased because of that decision today, and we could have had 9.25 acres of it. And the other reason why, in my opinion, Mountain Lakes was against it, and I would say to the residents, what's across the street, 200 feet, townhomes? If those new townhomes came in, guess what? Those property taxes would have been much lower than the property taxes 200 feet across the street. I'm just making a comment to you. But now with this decision today, I can't imagine where this is going to end up.
Well, yeah, no, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Homiak, let me just correct a couple things you said, just because we have members of the press here and the public, and they just want to have things correct. What happened was, you seemed to, you suggested or indicated that we would have a reduced affordable housing obligation if we went into the Highlands. And I would remind you that what the state did in one of the earlier round three regulations that was ruled unconstitutional, and this was under the Corzine administration, the state said basically that the Highlands towns, if you came in under the Highlands jurisdiction, that we would reduce your affordable housing obligation, and Precipony did that as a first step in order to avail itself of a reduced affordable housing obligation. But those regulations have been long since ruled unconstitutional. And as you know, the reason why Precipony pulled out of the Highlands was because it didn't want to have to go through the Highlands in connection with amending a wastewater management plan, which if you're in the Highlands, you would have to do it, would be much more cumbersome, and the town needs to have the wastewater management plan amended for unrelated reasons to this discussion. So going in, opting into the Highlands, as it were, at this point, does not reduce a municipality's affordable housing obligation. I think that it's fair to say that the ruling today, it's not an agreement, but a ruling by the Supreme Court, is being viewed as a victory for developers and for affordable housing advocates, because the court has brought back the builder's remedy. The builder's remedy, which was in effect as a remedy for builders who couldn't build prior to the adoption of the Fair Housing Act back in 1985. Now, that doesn't mean builders can run in tomorrow and file lawsuits, there's a 30-day period, there's a 90-day stay period, essentially, towns will have the opportunity to file declaratory judgment actions in their home counties, so that judges will decide whether or not a municipality has fulfilled its constitutional obligation for affordable housing in the town, that decision is being going to be made now by judges on a declaratory judgment basis. If towns receive those declaratory judgments, then they will be deemed to be affordable housing compliance, and then they would be immune from builder's remedies. If they do not receive the declaratory judgment, then as I read, based on what I read today, then the builder's remedy would be available to developers without having to exhaust administrative remedies. And that, I think, on a fair reading, is something that municipalities should be concerned about, because it, you know, the way the world works now, or has worked, and it's why we were able to get out of the RD Realty case on summary judgment, and you know, because you were in court, we could say, hey, Precipony's done everything that it was supposed to do to satisfy its obligation, and therefore, you know, we're essentially insulated or protected from these kinds of exclusionary zoning lawsuits, irrespective of the kind of class that the developer wanted to make up. And Judge Wiesenbeck agreed with us, and I think he made the correct decision. But, you know, now the world's going to change again, and it's going to put, in my opinion, a lot of pressure on municipalities, unless during this 90 or 120-day period, the legislature and the governor can come to terms on some sort of, you know, of a new affordable housing system. Maybe COA adopts new regulations, maybe they change the law, something needs to be done, in my opinion, to protect municipalities from builder remedy lawsuits that could be instituted in just a few months. And that's all going to, you know, I think, get discussed over, you know, the next few months, but for today's purposes, again, I think it's important to realize that the decision today, in my opinion, based on what I read, was not a pro municipality decision. I think it's one that builders are probably very pleased with, and one that affordable housing advocates are also very pleased with. And that means that properties, whether they be in Precipony or elsewhere, are going to be susceptible to builder remedy lawsuits in the future, unless towns like Precipony obtain declaratory judgment actions. And I'll tell you, one of the things that concerns me is that I think getting declaratory judgment actions is going to be potentially challenging, because in the court's prior opinion, they said that the round three rules had to be based on round two methodology. If you apply round two methodology to today's, to today, towns are going to have, many towns are going to have very, very high affordable housing requirements. So if that's the standard, then it's going to be a very high bar for municipalities to attempt to achieve in order to gain the protection of, you know, against builder remedy lawsuits. So again, that's a very preliminary, I stress to, a member of the press is writing all this down, assessment of today's decision. It's one that I'm going to have to read much more critically and report back to the mayor and council on, so that, you know, Precipony can figure out a strategy, and it's one we have to move on right away, because the court set, you know, timeframes in the very near future that are going to force us to act.
There's two remarks.
Oh, no.
Seven times, seven times...
Mr. Homiak, you can't, Mr. Homiak, you can't from there. Okay. Vin.
Counsel members, my name is Vinnie Shindel.
Yeah, take the mic off.
Counsel members, my name is Vinnie Shindel, I live at 3 FX Downey Court. I guess we're here about two hours and 20 minutes, and I have five minutes to speak. I'm going to take about 10 seconds and give you the other four minutes and 50 seconds. I want to know what we accomplished here at the council meeting tonight.
We set our agenda for next week's meeting. We set our agenda for next week's meeting. All right, see no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori. Segmented by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton. Segmented by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.